I should charge my pen. I charged it. Do I hear Ally's voice? No. No, you hear Connie. And I'm not getting attention. All right, y'all ready? Y'all ready? Good evening. It is six o'clock. I am calling to order the Fountain City Council meeting for September 26, 2023. Please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Hinton.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Rick.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Present.
All seven members present.
Thank you very much. That takes us to item 4.1, presentations. I was notified a little while ago, please take department update for risk OEM off your agenda for tonight, so we will not be having that tonight. They just came just a few weeks ago and gave us some updates, so we'll catch up at budget meeting next week if we need to do that. So that takes us to Black Hills Sustainability Report. Mr. Henley from Black Hills Energy, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Tom Henley with Black Hills Energy. My address is 1515 Arapahoe Street in Denver. And basically what I came here for was a couple of different reasons. I haven't had the opportunity to meet all of you since I've been in my position for the last year and a half. I am your liaison to the company. If you have any issues with our people in the field, anybody's coming to you with billing issues or needing help paying their bills or energy efficiency questions, I'm the guy. So you just got some cards handed to you that you'll be able to reach me at any time. I believe they may still have an office number. They did away with those, so we just have the main cellphone number. And if you need a different number, I can get you the 100 number where they can then patch it through to me. But basically, what I'd like to do is kind of cover some of the things that we've done in the last couple of years. We've initiated a sustainability program within the company in trying to lower our greenhouse gas emissions and try and capture those and meet state mandates and federal mandates. And if we could go to the next slide, I can kind of give you just a breakdown of what the company looks like. We operate in eight different states, and we have about 1.3 million customers throughout those states, both in gas and electric. And that means that we have about 800-plus communities. So we're in the smaller communities throughout Colorado. We're in the smaller communities throughout the other states as well. And we do have, as I said, about 1.3 million customers on the gas side are the total portion of the business. If we could go to the next slide, please? So for Black Hills Energy, sustainability really starts at the highest levels of the company. The CEO is dedicated to working to try and improve the company itself and our emissions capture process, as well as our environmental and social governance council. So we have one of those that are specifically working to try and meet through some of the inequities that are inherent within the system, both from a regulatory standpoint and also from a local government standpoint. So we try and help our people and customers in your residence there as we can. So if we go to the next slide, please? One of the things we've done in the last years, we've actually increased the amount of gas which we intend to capture. So we're going to, by 2035, achieve net zero carbon emissions from our natural gas system. That means everything that we control within Black Hills service territory, we're going to be capturing everything through advanced leak detections. We're going to be doing things like reducing the number of contractor hits which we have on the system. We're also replacing tons of old steel pipe which had the propensity to leak, which is obviously a proponent or a contributor to the methane in the atmosphere. And then we also are looking to reduce our electric emissions on the generation side of the house, where we are down in Pueblo Canyon City in the Arkansas Valley. And that's going to be targeted to be 40% down by 2030 and 70% by 2040. And if you have questions along the way, please feel free just to raise your hand or shout out or throw something at me, and I'll be happy to stop and answer whatever you have. If we go to the next slide, please? Specifically here in Colorado, we have about 308,000 customers, and that's in more than 119 communities throughout the state. As I mentioned, we're mostly small communities, so we live side by side with your residents and our customers. And the thing that we most want to do is be able to serve them and be compatible and very, very considerate of what their concerns and needs are. We have more than 617 megawatts worth of solar, wind, and natural gas power generation on the system for the electric side. And we have more than 435 employees throughout the state. So we do have a good presence here in Fountain. One of our larger service operation centers is here in town, just next to 25. And we operate about 10,000 miles of gas infrastructure within the state, so we have a significant presence. And you can see some of the states, everything from Rocky Ford to Florence to Frederick to Glimmer Springs and even Aspen. Go to the next slide, please? So as I mentioned, we serve more than 1.1 million natural gas customers in six different states, and we do operate a gas system above the industry standards with no cast iron pipe in our system since 2014. That's nearly 99% of the infrastructure comprised of materials with the lowest emission factors throughout the entire system. Our zero, net zero target for the natural gas distribution system leverages the company's focus on safety and system integrity while advancing current strategies to include expanded damage prevention, as I mentioned, advanced leak detection, things like when we're doing repairs of the system, we'll capture the natural gas instead of venting to the atmosphere. So various things which are not necessarily in place right now, but we're working towards getting them into the system. And we've also joined the EPA's Methane Challenge and One Future Coalition. The EPA's Methane Challenge consists of different partners who are transparently reporting the systematic and comprehensive actions that they're taking to reduce methane emissions. And we voluntarily committed to three best management practices. Again, the replacement of the distribution system mains, replacement of service lines which are old and potentially leaky, as well as trying to minimize the excavation damages. On the One Nation's Future Program with, the One Nation's Energy Future Program, members work to voluntarily reduce the methane emissions that are across our natural gas value chain to less than 1% by 2035, or 2025, rather, sorry. And if we could go to the next slide, please? So in some of the brand-new things that we've done within, here in Colorado, we've introduced a program that's called Green Forward. And basically, what it is, is it's a program where people can buy carbon offsets for the natural gas system. It's $5 per small block of the amount of energy you use within your home, and that money then goes towards things like building renewable natural gas facilities, as well as purchasing those credits to offset the customer's usage. We also have recently started the Black Hills Energy Renewable Resources, and that is working towards new renewable gas technologies and things that we will be bringing to the fore as we introduce the Clean Heat Program that we're going to be doing by the end of this year with, within the state of Colorado. So we have a number of other opportunities that we're looking at as well. We have been able to reduce the amount of energy that's been used on the natural gas system, to the point just last year here in Colorado, we could run about almost 5,000 homes. So we're taking significant measures. Our customers are responding very well to the messages and taking advantage of the rebates that we have within the system to help minimize their natural gas usage. So what does the sustainability report look like? Next slide, please? Basically, we are committed to a clean and energy future, and it is closely tied to our responsibility to provide the safe, reliable, and affordable energy that everyone needs here. We do this by investing in the success of our employees, our communities, and continually inventing and utilizing resources and, of course, keeping people at our decision-making. So when we have to invest within the system, we try and make the investment as much as we can to be safe, but as small as we can so it doesn't impact customers' bills too much. So what we've done in, just in 2022 alone, our community support totaled about 5.2 million within all the states that we serve, and that included over 604,000 employees donating to United Way. And as a company, we have a program called Black Hills Cares, and that's an expanded energy assistance fund. And our foundation within the company matches both customers' and employees' donations dollars for, dollar for dollar, and that totaled up to $1.8 million. In Colorado, I should say, it was $1.8 million total. So that's, excuse me, a little more than $900,000 worth of contributions to economic development groups, scholarships, sponsorships, everything that your community is made up of. When people have needs, like food banks, we've stepped up to the plate and been able to help them out as well. And then if we look at some of the things like energy assistance within the state of Colorado, we averaged about 169,000 last year that we gave to the Energy Outreach Colorado Program. Our investment in safety and reliability and sustainability of our extensive utility systems delivers meaningful growth and sustains jobs, families, and communities. In 2022, our direct economic impact in Colorado was more than $200 million. So we have a significant presence, even though we're in so many different small towns. We have a lot of buying power. We have a lot of materials which we have to put into the ground, and we affect a lot of people's lives. And we take no great, we don't take that with any great insignificance. So over the last year, again, mentioned that we had a great energy efficiency program, so through the last eight states, we averaged more than $9 million worth of energy efficiency savings which we gave back to customers. If we go to the next slide, please? As I mentioned, we will be filing the Clean Heat Program, which was mandated in Senate Bill 21264. And basically, what that requires is us to look towards a carbon-free and emissions-free system. And what we are required to do and file with the Public Utilities Commission is actually meet about 4% to 25, and 24% reduction, rather, over 2005 levels and 22%, I'm sorry, 2015 baseline, and 22% by 2030. And that includes the gas distribution system and other customer natural gas combustion system. The issue with this, though, is that it's really more like a 20% by 25 reduction and 40% by 2040 because of all the growth we've seen in Colorado. And I'm sure you've seen all the growth here. We're working on a significant expansion on the system in one of the brand-new neighborhoods, which is going into southeast here. And it's something that we will continue to work with and deal with. I will say that we are working very, very hard to stay within the various cost containment caps that they have within the bill and also still hit the emissions target. So we look forward to being able to provide this. We will also be able to provide lots of other solutions. Some of the basic ones that we will look at is clean hydrogen, renewable natural gas, landfill gas, and as well as some other ones that, again, we will present to the Public Utilities Commission. If they accept it as something that's, that they would deem appropriate, then we will implement that into the program as well. And I believe the, just one more slide, please? Oh, and I failed to mention, I'm sorry, energy efficiency. And then some circumstances, in some of the cases down in the Arkansas Valley where we have dual fuel, meaning we serve both gas and electric, we can pursue some beneficial electrification policies down in those areas. So we have a very strong plan. We will be presenting that in the next couple of months here with them. We're finalizing the details now. And then the Public Utilities Commission, in the first quarter to first half of 2024, will end up having hearings and take public comment on that. So I will make sure that you all know when we're going in front of them, so if you have any comments and you'd like to see the plan, we'll make sure that we get it in front of you. And if we get any, if you have any specific questions, I can bring an expert that's working on that to give you a presentation on that as well. And the final slide, please? BlackHillsEnergy.com/sustainability will give you a great look at what the, what the sustainability plan actually looks like. And the reason why we don't have printouts is because we're trying to be sustainable. So if you want to go and look more in depth into the program, I would encourage you to go there. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Thank you for coming in tonight. I really appreciate it.
You bet.
One of the really great things Black Hills did a few years ago for our community was to donate some play equipment to one of our parks here in town for an all-abilities play area. And we actually still have your sign-up over there.
Great.
So thank you so much for that grant, for that opportunity to add to our parks over there. And thank you so much. And I don't think you were here yet when that happened.
No, I wasn't, but thank you.
Yeah, so it's been, been really great to have that. Let's see, Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah, you mentioned hydrogen. What would you use hydrogen to reduce your footprint for? That's pretty volatile.
So hydrogen in its purest form has the ability, and I'm not a chemist, so if I get this a little bit off, please don't hold it against me, but they can take hydrogen in the gas form and actually blend it with the natural gas to a certain level. It can't go up to 100% because the systems are not compatible fully, but they have the ability to put any percentage of it, which reduces the natural gas component that goes into it, and obviously that therefore drops the level of emissions that come out when it's combusted.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe you were going to fuel power plants with hydrogen.
Don't know if that's something they may do in the future. Who knows?
Well, it can be done. We all remember the Hindenburg, though.
Yeah, well.
Were you there?
Thank you.
Were you there?
You're welcome.
Oh, you saw it in the movie. Okay, all right. In the movie, yeah. No, I know, I was just joking, yeah. So, all righty. Councilmember Rick?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I noted you mentioned several cost savings. I'm a Black Hills Energy customer, and thank you for the reliable energy. However, about four or five years ago, my bill was $40 a month, and this year it's $75 a month. It's gone up significantly, so I have to question, if you're making all these savings, why is my bill still going up?
Well, we consistently invest in the system, and the system, particularly for the safety and reliability standards, we have to. And we have to meet state and federal thresholds for emission reduction, so for that reason, we have to invest in the system. I can tell you that on October 1st, we will, we'll actually be announcing on Thursday, but on October 1st, your bill will drop by between 6 and 29%, depending on where you are within the state. That's solely for what we call the gas commodity adjustment, which we do quarterly now, and it's just for the cost of the fuel because natural gas prices have dropped. So we weave that into the overall energy cost, which you'll see in your bill. You won't see a specific line item that says gas cost adjustment, it says energy charge. And that will be going down right now, and then it gets adjusted quarterly based on what we pay in the market. We pass along the cost of natural gas dollar for dollar. We don't make any money on that product.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You bet.
Councilmember Hinton?
Thank you for your presentation tonight. As I look at your picture, I see a lot of young men and young women. You know, what does it take to get into that career field? We have a lot of students that'll be graduating this year, probably uncertainty of what they might do in life, but I actually did this when I retired in 2014. I worked in the renewable energy field. I think it's a great field, but what does one have to have to be able to kind of start in this field?
We have jobs which range from entry level. We have everything from field work, we have data work, our data entry work, we have legal work, we have human resources work, we have people like myself, accountants, we have people that work in the government affairs and regulatory area. So pretty much any profession, we even have meteorologists on staff. So anything that you can imagine that you might have an inclination to try and do, many utilities will have that field, and all you have to do is look into it, reach out to the human resources area, or just look on the website and see what's there. But we do many apprentice programs where we have people that come in straight out of high school, and they just want to be, they want to work for utility for a career, and they look at it and they say, this is something that I want to be able to do. And they can get hired on as an apprentice, and then they can be a full-time tech once they get done, and the pay is quite good for those folks.
Yeah, so that's a shout-out, parents. There's some, there's some opportunities for your kids to be able to go into an awesome field, to have, to establish, you know, some income in there. So just look at these things. There is a shortage in the workforce. People don't want to go to work, and so we need everybody hands on deck.
All right, any other questions from anybody on council? Thank you so much for coming in tonight. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you very much. Have a good night.
All right, that takes us on to the next item under presentations is the Creek Week presentation by Ally. Oh, I don't want to kill your last name. Sorry.
Ally Shook.
Okay.
All shook up. Okay. Good evening, my here council.
First of the public, my name is Ally Shook. I'm the executive director of the Fountain Creek Watershed District, and we were established in 2009 to preserve and protect the health of our home watershed, and that runs from Palmer Lake all the way down to Pueblo, 927 square miles. And we've done that through extensive on-the-ground creek restoration, but also through our biggest and best program, which I started 10 years ago, the Creek Week Cleanup. And this year, we are celebrating 10 years. We want to make that impact bigger and better than ever. So Creek Week is nine days long. We like to say nine days, no excuses. There's opportunities for everyone to get out there and engage and make our watershed cleaner and safer for all of us to enjoy. In particular, here in Fountain, 9:00 Saturday morning, there's two public events that I'd like to invite all of you to attend. One is at the Fountain Creek Nature Center, and the other is at Cross Creek Park. And those are two opportunities where you can just show up. They're going to provide the bags, the gloves, trash grabbers, stickers, fun giveaways like that, and we're all going to come together and see what we can do to help protect the health of our waterways. You know, water is one of the most important issues that we face, and I think by getting people out into that resource really helps to develop that understanding of the water issues that we face and the ability of people to really make a difference. These cleanups take about an hour, maybe two hours max, and the impact has been fantastic. In the last 10 years, we have engaged 20,000 citizens in removing 140 tons of litter, which is as much as the Statue of Liberty weighs, or if you're an animal person like me, as much as a blue whale, which is the largest animal on our planet. So really proud of this program, really proud of our partnership with the city of Fountain. Our Board of Directors Chair here is Ms. Estes, so we're happy to have her on our board, and just have always appreciated the support from Fountain. So would encourage everyone to come out for Creek Week this year.
Thank you. And I believe Councilmember Duncan, you're the alternate on that board, too?
Yes. Sorry, Ms. Duncan, sorry.
No, it's okay. Anyways, okay, any questions from anybody on council?
Okay. As a reminder, I'll pass out a save the date to you all, and happy to have you.
The city clerk, please. Okay. And you said the two events, 9:00 AM, Cross Creek Park or?
Cross Creek Park or Fountain Creek Nature Center. Yeah, you just show up, they'll provide everything you need.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. All right, that takes us. All right. That takes us to item 4.2, Board Commission and Committee Appointments. We have none tonight. And so, that takes us on to item 5, Correspondence, Comments, and Ex officia reports. Mr. Evans?
I'll have enough later on, Mayor. I don't have anything right now.
Okay. Troy?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Chief?
Good evening. I've got a few things on the agenda as well. So, you'll hear from me from here in a minute. The one thing I will add to what I've got on the agenda is we did have our in-person ISO inspection, the first part of this week. From my perspective, it went well. However, we have no insight as to scoring or points. So, this will probably be the last time you hear me mention anything about it for probably the next four to six months until we get the results.
Okay. Thank you. Chief?
Good evening. I just have one thing, and I just want to, um, we're going to start having a physiotherapist. I believe that's-ish.
Athletic trainer.
Athletic trainer are going to be housing themselves at the police department for our officers and firefighters to come by. And they're going to be there to start four hours, three times a week. And they're going to be providing immediate services for the officers and firefighters to help them in their physical fitness, techniques, things like that. So, we're very proud to have that. That's going to be a great thing. Shout-out to Mike Skelton for heading that off, and we finally got that done. So, and we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Great. Keep everybody in shape, less injuries, and feel better, huh? Great. Thank you. Um, Ms. Christie?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Shawna?
The only thing I have is that you were all presented with the budget book for, the draft budget book for the meeting next week. So, let me know if there's any problems or anybody's missing one.
Okay. And that meeting is?
Thursday, the 4th.
Okay. At 6:00 PM?
Yes, ma'am.
Here in City Hall?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's open to the public?
The 5th? Oh, I'm sorry, the 5th.
The 5th, open to the public?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. John?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to take the opportunity, and it's my honor to make an introduction this evening, if Mr. John Garrett would please stand up for a moment. John Garrett is our new Human Resources Manager. The city went through a very exhaustive search to find a highly qualified and experienced Human Resources Manager, and we found that in John Garrett. He's coming to us over from the Humane Society of the Pike's Peak Region. But he's returning to local government. He has local government experience. He's also a retired non-commissioned officer in the U.S. Army, and brings a lot of enthusiasm into the office and makes the Fourth John in administrative services as well. So, we're, we're kind of working on initials and last names and nicknames up on the second floor. But I just wanted to take a chance, opportunity to introduce John to, to council, and, and welcome him to the City of Fountain.
I look forward to working with every single one of you. Mr. Hinton and I, we've already discovered that we recently were in the same unit together. And if you ever need me for anything, you know where my office is.
Thank you very much, and welcome to the City of Fountain. Councilmember Estes?
And I went to the Silver, Silver Key Awards Gala on Friday, and I was hearing your kudos there. So, they were, they were, everybody was saying, we are very lucky to have you. So, welcome aboard.
Jamie Halligan, there, ma'am?
No, Roxanne.
Oh, Roxanne. She's working.
I was hearing the same thing at the Homefront Military Network. Yes, from Silver Key. Yes. All right. Okay. Anybody else? Welcome. Look forward to working with you. Thank you. Alrighty. Okay. Um, let's see. IT, anything tonight?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right. City Clerk?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Mr. Rick?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Corey?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Hinton?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Estes?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Applegate?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Duncan?
Alrighty. So, um, this is Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th through October 15th. And I was honored to attend the 2023 Milton E. Proby Cultural Heritage Room Induction Ceremony honoring Mr. Ray Aguilera. And he's the founder and president, was the founder and president of Pueblo Hispanic Education Foundation. So, I just wanted to say, you know, anything, there are other events that are coming up this weekend. There's an event at library, I think it's 21C, for the Hispanic Heritage Month. So, if you can get out and celebrate that, that would be great. Wanted to discuss something that we've been hearing on TV. It, it kind of went away, but it's still there in the news is fentanyl that's going on. There's affecting our youth. There's still an issue here in Colorado. I don't know if you saw the news the last couple of days, but there's been a couple of deaths with fentanyl. And it's affecting Americans between the ages of 18 and 45. And I just hope that this legislative session, that there is a bill to address any distribution of fentanyl, not based on grams, and, and not to treat it as a felony, as a misdemeanor. I mean, this, this drug is killing our youth, and, and we really need to crack down on the distribution of fentanyl. The last thing I have is peak alerts. I don't know if you have that on your phone, but it's a emergency notification. So, it, it notifies you of evacuations, missing person reports. You can get that on an app. You can get it on your phone. You can get a text, or you can get it on your computer. And if you'd like to receive peak alerts, you can call 719-785-1971, or you can visit peakalerts.org. And that's all I have.
All right. It is really great because they geofence it to the area of town you're in. So, you're not going to hopefully get one like an event up in Briargate or something. So, or if you are up there, like I have had one time, and it's great. So, all right. So, I've been following a bill and doing a lot of research and speaking to the bill authors. And so, in November of 2020, Colorado voters voted 57% yes to 42% no to repeal what is known as the Gallagher Amendment. By repealing Gallagher, it affected the way property taxes are assessed. I believe there are a number of reasons people could give why they voted yes or no. But the reality is that we have seen huge increases in the valuation of property in Colorado and an increase in each of our property taxes. Many people hoped the state legislature would come up with a fix this last session, this last session before the property bills, tax bills hit our mailboxes, but they did not. Representative Frisell tried to introduce HB 231054, which would have provided tax relief, a bill that I zoomed in on to testify in supportive, and it was killed in committee before it could even make it to the House floor for discussion or debate. What did pass, introduced by Representative Rose Pagliisi, was Senate Bill 23108. This bill clarified that a mill levy could be temporarily reduced a year at a time. And then unless recertified at that lower rate, would revert to the same mill levy it was previously. Now, why is this important today? I'm asking for the council to consider at our budget meeting on October 5th, which we just talked about, that the finance staff bring us the budget as usual, but that we also consider if we have the ability to temporarily, for one year, reduce the city mill levy. I would like them to have time to research and consider how this would affect the budget, and more importantly, if this could give some tax relief to our citizens while the state legislature looks at this, hopefully again next year. The Fountain Legislative Committee studied and followed, which Councilmember Duncan and I are on, studied and followed SB 23108 during the legislative session, and sent a support position for the bill to our state representatives and senators. And we understood and welcomed the clarification of a temporary mill levy decreases as a possible tool for the city to use. So, I'm, I'm asking, I've been studying that and looking at it. I asked Mr. Lewis. We've met repeatedly and discussed it, discussed it with our city manager, to see if that's something that we could consider. And it looks like that is something we can possibly consider at our, for a discussion item at our budget meeting. So, I wanted to make sure that, that everyone is, is okay with us looking at it for that direction at the budget meeting. So, once again, this would be, it's something that has to be done according to the bill, annually reviewed, or it reverts back to what it was before. So, if anybody wants to look it up, it's Senate Bill 23-108. So, that will be something that we will be discussing at our budget meeting then, on next week, on the 5th, at 6 o'clock. So, but that is something I've been working on for months, working with the legislature, trying to support it, hoping that, that they would go in the direction that we wanted them to go and fix it. They didn't. And then I'll have a different ask when we get to council agenda request time. So, okay. Alrighty. That takes us on to Public to Be Heard, Item 6. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. And I do have some cards here tonight, and I'm going to go in the order that I received them. So, the first one was from Mrs. Penny Tramino. So, if you could come on down, please. And Sylvia, if we can make sure we have the, thank you.
Penny Tramino, 405 North El Paso. So, um, I wanted to start off with saying that I don't feel like this is a city that acts like it needs more money from its citizens. Our proposed budget for this year is $83 million. Within our budget, I also noticed that there's a 7% pay increase for employees. Out of that, uh, out of that $83 million, $750,000 is allowed for streets. That comes out to 0.9% of the budget. That's less than 1% of the budget. So, I'm trying to understand how this is done and why more money isn't given, isn't allotted for streets. I need to know where the remaining $82 million goes to. Fountain's budget of $83 million divided by our population shows $2,800 for each Fountain citizen to provide streets, maintenance, et cetera. Pueblo has a budget of approximately $100 million, and when divided by their population, it shows $863 per citizen. This is why I question how my money is spent. Fountain should not be hurting for money, in my opinion. So, where is the problem? I would like to get with people and understand this. I would like to know where the $82 million goes. So, the city, I feel, should consider lowering our sales tax, I'm going to look into this mill levy thing, by a half percent to show they're serious about joining PPRTA. And since we love to quote Reagan so much, and I was a huge fan of Reagan myself, uh, there is another Reagan quote, and it is, "The problem is not that the people are taxed too little. The problem is that government spends too much." I truly believe this is the case with this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd?
Penny, we're happy to sit down and meet with you. I'm not sure where you got the $83 million figure.
On the city's website page, it is the proposed budget for this year.
So, we'll sit down and talk about that. But if that does include all of our utilities being water and electric, which that's not eligible, we can't use that for any type of road funding whatsoever. But we'll be happy to sit down and talk about general fund and give you those specific numbers.
Is it only 0.9% goes to streets?
Correct. Yeah. Cannot use any type of ratepayer money towards the streets. You bet.
Okay. So, just to clarify for the record, the city's budget is different than the utilities budget. They cannot be mixed. The monies cannot be mixed.
Correct. Utilities are separate enterprises, so that is totally separate than the general fund. They cannot be utilized for any general fund usage.
Okay. All right. Okay. The next card I have is from John Langley from the American Legion. And I'll tell you, I had the best steak there last Friday night. That was really good.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, esteemed council, John Langley with the American Legion Post 38. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about what we got going on in the next couple of weeks. This Friday, our scouts are going to be having a dinner, which is a slopper dinner. And so, that will be served this Friday. Our auxiliary is doing a coat drive now, and they're taking new and gently-used coats, all sizes. And they're working with the SRO in the community to donate the kids' coats to local school kids on the third week of October. The rest will go to veterans and the homeless. Friday, October 6th, our Sons of the American Legion will be having a spaghetti dinner. And we have a craft fair that the auxiliary is going to be doing on October the 14th from 9 till 4 o'clock. All the spots have been sold, and so, we will have a legion full of crafters. So, come, bring your money and, and help provide money to local crafters that are in the community. And that is it for this time. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for council? Nope. Thank you. All right. The last card I have is from Mrs. Carrick. Please come on down.
Hello. My name's Fran Carrick. I live at 10755 Shumway Road. Obviously, this council is interested in what the community is doing and what the citizens groups are doing. We had a meeting on Thursday night, and we had 17 in attendance. We also had Mrs. Hinton in attendance, and someone from the city called PPRTA. We can't figure out, we can't find out who that was. They won't tell us. No one on council, or?
Fran, actually, PPRTA called me and said that they had seen it on social media, and said that one of their CAC members may attend. And I said, we wouldn't recommend that they would like to, but they called us.
Good. 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 Okay. So, now we know. I don't know why they're being so secretive about it. That being said, um, the consensus is that there is a problem with the budget and the roads in Fountain. And the citizens would like to have something done about it.
I believe you all received a letter from Daryl Couch last night addressing the half-a-percent sales tax that they would like, he suggested that could be refunded to the citizens. We agree with that. We do not support, we support PPRTA. We think it's a good idea, but we're not going to support the tax increase until we get some skin in the game from council and staff. And there are some things that we would be happy to discuss with staff. I think most importantly, council. We want some leadership from council. So, do you have any questions about the meeting, or did you get what information you needed? We sure missed seeing you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That is all the cards that I have tonight. So, that takes us on to Item 7, Consent Agenda. All items listed in the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discussion of council. What would council like to do with the consent agenda? Councilmember Hinton?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Is there any deliberation?
Somebody called it a loss.
I haven't voted. I think we need to reset that.
I know, but the, like, the screen is blank. So, we can't vote.
We can't vote. Everything's blank.
Do you need to reset? Yeah. Reset.
All right. Please vote. Seven yes. Motion carried. Okay. Thank you very much. That takes us on to Item 8, Old Business. There is no old business tonight. Takes us on to Item 9, New Business. Item 8, Consideration of Items Removed From the Consent Agenda. There were no items removed. Item 9B, Public Hearing and Resolution 23-039, a resolution approving a service plan for the Mesa Ridge Metropolitan District, numbers 3 through 5. Ms. Martinez?
Good evening. Kristi Martinez with the City of Fountain Planning Department. Tonight is consideration of a public hearing for approval of the Mesa Ridge Metropolitan District's number 3 through 5 service plan. The Mesa Ridge Metropolitan Districts 3 through 5 is a Title 32 district, which is outlined in Colorado Vice Statutes, Title 32, which outlines all the requirements for what needs to go into it, the notification process, what municipalities and counties can and cannot review with service plans. But generally, this is proposed as a multi-district structure, which will allow for the phased installation of public improvements, so water, streets, sanitary- so water, streets, sanitary sewer, park improvements, drainage, things like that. It also provides for the ongoing operation and maintenance of the district, should it be approved tonight. The Mesa Ridge area and the location of the district boundaries is generally located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Mesa Ridge Parkway and Mark Shuffle. The areas contained within this district are proposed to be approximately four-hundred-and-seventy-one acres. And within the district boundaries, there is a proposal of eighteen-hundred residential units and twenty-one acres of commercial land. In March of twenty-three, the council did approve the Mesa Ridge Overall Development Plan Amendment Number Five. The portions of the district boundaries for three through five were more of the eastern boundaries contained within there. There is already an existing Mesa Ridge Metro District Number One and Mesa Ridge Metro District Two, which are contained within that overall development plan area.
Could you pause for just one moment? I'm opening a public hearing for resolution twenty-three dash zero-three-nine. Thank you.
Paul, do I have control of the presentation, or do you have to do it? Okay. No. Okay. In general, the purpose of a metropolitan district is to provide the financing for the public improvements within the specified district boundaries. Some of those improvements, like I mentioned, are street improvements, water installation, water main installation, sanitary sewer installation, parks, drainage. The ongoing maintenance of typical private improvements, such as drainage and parks, do tend to fall to the district and then their ongoing maintenance. Public infrastructure is generally accepted by the city, so if the city provides water to that district, the city will then assume and accept the public infrastructure for the water mains. In this instance, for the Mesa Ridge three through five districts, it would be for the public streets, as this area is within the Whitefield Water and Sanitation District Service Boundaries. So any public infrastructure for water and sewer would then be accepted by the Whitefield Water and Sanitation District. All of the debt that is proposed to be issued by the metropolitan districts are to be refunded or repaid by, um, the property taxes for the future construction of those residents that are then paid on the back end. All of the debt through the districts must be discharged no later than forty years. That is a city standard within our model service plan, which is also carried forward into this proposed service plan. And it should be noted that any debt that is issued by metropolitan districts do not utilize city funds, city taxpayer dollars. It is all indebtedness incurred by the landowners of the district and then repaid by the future users and residents within the district boundaries. Next slide. As I mentioned, this is a multi-district structure. They are proposing three district phases. Phase, or district numbers three and four are proposed to be residential. So district number three is the area in blue. District four is the area in yellow, and district five is the commercial. Within the residential district boundaries, they are proposing a maximum aggregate mill levy of forty-five mills, of which a maximum can be used for thirty-five mills for debt and fifteen mills for operation and maintenance, which means they can utilize any variation of that to accomplish the debt service-ness and the operation and maintenance associated with it. So they may issue thirty mills of debt and fifteen mills for operation, or they may go up to the maximum of debt of the thirty-five mills and then reduce their operation and maintenance cost to ten. It just has to not exceed the maximum of that forty-five mills. Very similar for district number five is the twenty-one acres at the southwest corner of Mesa Ridge Parkway and Mark Shuffle. Mark Shuffle is the roadway along the, um, eastern boundary or the right side of the screen, shown in red. The commercial area does have a higher maximum mill levy, just because it is a higher property taxed area. The maximum aggregate is sixty mills, which, with a maximum of fifty mills for debt and fifteen mills for operation and maintenance. So very similar to the residential, they can balance between the debt service and the ongoing operation and maintenance mills, as long as it doesn't exceed the maximum of the sixty mills. Next slide. Within this area, as I mentioned, it is already encumbered with a portion of the Mesa Ridge Metro District Number One and a portion of Mesa Ridge Metro District Number Two. Uh, both of those districts already have existing intergovernmental agreements, or IGAs, with the city and another metropolitan district, the Cross Creek, um, Cross Creek, or metropolitan district, for the construction, operation, and ongoing maintenance of the Cross Creek Park and Hale Reservoir. When the Mesa Ridge area was annexed into the city, the Cross Creek Park was utilized as a regional park to satisfy the, uh, park requirements for both Cross Creek and Mesa Ridge. However, there have been some ongoing, um, intergovernmental agreements between the city and various, uh, metro districts, Cross Creek, Mesa Ridge Metro Districts Number One and Two, to address the ongoing maintenance, um, for the funding mechanisms for the Hale Reservoir. Those have already been memorialized in existing IGAs, and then a lot of that same language is being carried forth in this proposed service plan for districts three through five to ensure that that same debt and those funding mechanisms are in place for these future districts. That condition, or that mechanism and language is included within the service plan, but is also recommended as a condition of approval of the service plans tonight. Next slide. The Mesa Ridge Metro Districts three through five does comply with the Colorado revised statutes thirty-two, one, two, oh, three. Those specific nine standards and review criteria are outlined in your staff report that you received, and your packet is also outlined within the service plan. Just to summarize, some of the, um, criteria is really to ensure that the boundaries of the metro district provide existing and projected financial needs for it to be organized, that the district is capable of providing the economic and sufficient service, which is, um, identified through a third-party financial review of what their proposed income levels will be based upon the taxes, the assessed values, and the ad valorem taxes. That the area within the district does have the financial ability to discharge any debt that is incurred within that forty-year time period, and that the service plan is in substantial compliance with the city's master plan. That site statute also does require public, uh, notification of the public hearing, which was provided by the petitioner. It does notify all of the property owners within the district boundary, any existing municipality, and any special district that issued ad valorem taxes, uh, within three miles of the district boundaries. Next slide. Tonight, staff would make a recommendation to conditionally approve the service plan for Mesa Ridge Metro Districts Number Three through Five and approval of resolution twenty-three oh thirty-nine, subject to the condition, um, and I will read it into the record, that any resolution or order adopted by the Mesa Ridge Metro Districts One and Two excluding territory that will become part of the Mesa Ridge Metro Districts Three through Five, provide a provision that the exclusion will not become effective until such time as Mesa Ridge Metropolitan Districts One and Two, the Cross Creek Metropolitan District, and the City of Fountain have entered into one or more intergovernmental agreements that are acceptable to the city that allocate an appropriate share of the cost for the design, construction, operation, and maintenance of the Hale Reservoir and the Cross Creek Regional Park to the Mesa Ridge Metropolitan Districts Three through Five, and provide a funding mechanism for said costs. The other option tonight, if council chose to exercise it, would be to, uh, simply approve the service plan tonight, or they have the option to deny. Are there any questions for staff?
I just have really one quick, uh, comment, and then I'll go to councilmember Rick. In our commentary we received tonight, um, on the third paragraph down, um, it says, when we're talking about the maximum debt, um, it says, "They anticipate approximately five-point-one million in debt in December twenty-twenty-six. District Four anticipates issuing approximately two-point-nine million dollars debt in December twenty-thirty-six. And District Five, the commercial area, anticipates issuing nine dollars and eighty-one cents in debt."
That should be nine-point-eight-one million.
Okay, I think, I figured that's what it was, but I didn't want to assume. Okay. And I wanted to make sure everybody saw that correction. Okay, alrighty, thank you. Councilmember Rick?
Paul, can you go back to the slide with the, uh, map on it, please? Thank you. Kristi, question for you. I just want to be clear. Uh, when we approved this, uh, zoning and, uh, plan on second reading, we changed it to read that, uh, Link Road would be extended north on the east side of that, yes. That would be extended up. Does this agreement do anything to change that approval?
No, it does not. That wouldn't have any impact on the previous approvals.
Okay. That's all I had, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
We also have representation from, um, the applicants, in addition to their legal staff, who had prepared their, um, service plan that was presented tonight.
Okay. Would they like to come down, please? And introduce yourselves for the record?
Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Appreciate your time being here, and out of respect for that time, we do have a presentation, but I think Ms. Martinez more than adequately covered all of the detail in there. Um, there is one, uh, question. I always look for the why, the how, the what. We have the how and the what, the why. Uh, why are we here for, uh, to establish districts three through five? Um, districts one and two, if you recall, have, have been in existence for almost twenty years now. Um, they have done what they were purposed to do. Um, District Two, uh, if you're aware, uh, just this spring, transitioned to be fully resident-controlled district. Uh, that district has accomplished its mission. It put in the improvements, uh, it issued the debt to pay off that improvements. Uh, and for council's information, we're actually looking at refinancing that debt as well to lower the mill levy, lower the debt, um, or lower the mill levy for those residents. So, um, that's a success story in my book. After doing this for twenty-five years, that's a great, great place to be in, in the life of a district. Just wanted to thank, uh, again, Kristi, as well as Tim Flynn, your special counsel, who we worked with since March, to get to this point. They've been a pleasure to work, work with, uh, and we agree with the conditions that were presented for approval, and also that the conditions under the statute have been met, and we would just ask for your, uh, vote tonight.
I didn't catch your name for the record.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Russ Dykstra from Spencer Fane on behalf of the petitioners.
Okay.
Uh, and we do have a full team here if there are any other specific questions that we can help answer.
Okay, any questions from council for him? Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you. So, um, the one question I have is how much, um, debt is currently, um, with this project?
Uh, District Number Two has approximately nine million dollars.
And, and that's all to date?
Correct.
And this is for, is, is this considering Cross Creek?
Um, that's under an IGA. It's not necessarily debt. Um, but that IGA, and we've talked with, uh, your special counsel and staff, and we are, uh, gearing up, so we will amend that IGA to include these new districts as, to be a party of that as well.
Okay. So can you break that down per homeowner? How much would that be?
Um, we do have, um, and if we do want to look at that slide, I do have a slide that breaks it down for, uh, an average, I think it's a five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar house, and these houses range from two-hundred thousand to six-fifty. So we just ran it off of that. It's approximately thir, just over fourteen-hundred dollars a year will be, um, directly paid to the metro district to, to fund the public improvements.
Okay. You have that slide?
Yeah. Do we have that slide, Kristi?
You should be able to use the clicker.
Okay. Next one, okay, right here. Uh, so the first line where it says calculation, that's a five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar house. And it shows currently, as it, with the current taxes that are imposed, would be three-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty, one-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. Um, the next, at the bottom of the calculation, shows that with the district would be four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. So it's, uh, approximately that seventeen-hundred. And I apologize, I was thinking of the one after this, on, on the calculation. But it's seventeen-hundred dollars, uh, which is going to be that four-hundred-and-thirteen dollars per year, per month, excuse me.
For how many years?
Uh, the bonds are projected for thirty years. And often what we see, uh, like for Mesa Ridge District Number Two, uh, we're looking at a refunding right now. Their mill levy will, we're anticipating, will drop about fifteen mills, is what we're anticipating. So this is the projection, and it will probably be at around that level for the first, uh, ten years, five to ten years, depending on what the bond markets are. But then we typically refund those, uh, at a lower interest rate once the full community is built out, because then the risk profile goes down. We can get a rated transaction for the municipal bonds, as well as get bond insurance, and that lowers it significantly, which will, um, be passed directly through to the residents.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Hinton?
Yes, sir. You use an acronym, and I love acronyms, but IGA, can you just explain what that is for the, for the public, please?
The, the danger of doing this way too long. Inter, intergovernmental agreement, sir.
And, and an intergovernmental agreement is used because they are their own governing body?
Correct.
And then we're a governing body, and so when you, they just have to, uh, do an intergovernmental agreement when anything is, is done.
Correct, and that's what we anticipate when we redo the one with, uh, Cross Creek for the Regional Park and Hale Reservoir.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, sir. You bet.
Kristi, did you have anything else right now? Okay, this is a public hearing. If we have any members of the public who wish to come up and speak to this, we ask that you, uh, come up and state your name for the record, and then, uh, make your, uh, comments or your questions, uh, three minutes.
Mayor and councilmembers, thank you. My, my name is Elise Bergston. I'm the district manager for Cross Creek Metropolitan District. I just, I want to thank, uh, city staff and also, uh, Russ and his team for, uh, the conditions that have been put on, on, uh, on the approval. And glad to, really glad to hear that, uh, that the developer is not going to, is, is fully on board with that. Uh, and I just wanted to, um, remind you all, because I, I don't know if you've ever seen me up here. We haven't been up here in a long time. But I, uh, that condition is vital for Cross Creek Park and Hale Reservoir to be rebuilt, and Cross Creek Park to ever be finished being constructed. The history of that is the market crashed, and Mesa Ridge wasn't finished out as expected, uh, when it was just one and two. I think the whole of, of what will become Metro District Three, uh, would have originally stayed in Metro Districts One and Two. And so those parcels were committed to, for operations and maintenance, and also for capital funding that would have been collected as park fees that would be paid to Cross Creek to finish out the park. Mesa Ridge has lived up to their agreement for the other parcels that have been, um, already constructed, and we've received about five-hundred thousand, but that was going to be capped at two-and-a-half million. And, um, we've been working on trying to find a way to construct Hale Reservoir, reconstruct Hale Reservoir for, for at least twenty years. And, um, as rules have changed and costs have gone up, the orig, our service plan originally contemplated that that would cost, uh, several hundred thousand dollars. Our first, um, cost estimate when we actually did the design in two thousand fourteen, fifteen was three-point-six million. Um, as, as, uh, we have come back around to look at that again and, uh, try to find that funding, it was looking with rule changes, like it could be as high as eight or nine million dollars. So Cross Creek has pivoted to make a smaller repair project of Hale Reservoir. But the whole, uh, still the whole construction cost is, is estimated at four to five million dollars. So the two million dollars that we hope to receive, it would be great to receive it before twenty-twenty-six, uh, if there would be any way for, for that part to get moved up. We are, we just won't be able to do that reconstruction of Hale Reservoir without those funds. And I also want to report that Mesa Ridge Metro Districts One and Two have been contributing for some, uh, for a percentage of the operations and maintenance for the last several years. So I, I wanted to thank them for that, and thank you all for considering this approval and making it conditional. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
No.
No, thank you.
Thank you. So any other members of the audience that have any questions or any concerns they'd like to express on this? Please come down and state your name for the record.
Good evening. Connie Wisenhent. I was curious, um, did we say that these houses range from three-hundred thousand to five-hundred thousand dollars per home? Two, two, two-hundred thousand, two? So are, are they all just, um, residential homes? Are we doing anything for folks who are not in that price range? Maybe apartment complexes, condos, or this is already existing plant? Maybe apartment complexes, condos, or this is already existing, planted and built? I'm not familiar with this. So if you could just talk a little bit about that?
Is that your only question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, Christie has a, is.
I'm short, and I'm in the back, so.
It works perfect.
Within the Mesa Ridge overall development plan that was previously approved, it does propose multifamily in the, I don't have the pointer, but in the lower western portion along that north, that orange roadway that heads north-south from CNS. In that quadrant there, there is a proposal for multifamily. In that blue shaded area, though it is primarily single-family detached, but there are other residential nodes within the yellow phase as well for various housing products.
Awesome. Thank you.
And just on a personal note, speaking just for myself, not for the whole council, I do not believe in the state of Colorado, you will see condominiums be built until the legislature addresses the condominium defect law that builders want to come back and build them in this state. It's too expensive and too liable. We liableless? They'll get sued. Does that work? Okay. Until they fix the construction defect law. And that has been asked and asked of our legislature for years now on end. Okay. Anybody else who'd like to come up and make a comment, or any questions on this project? Okay, I believe then, Madam Clerk, we're ready to close the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing on this issue and bring it back up to the dais. And what would council like to do with item 9B for resolution 23-039? I have no lights. Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah. Move to approve resolution 13-039 with conditions from the staff.
Mr. Applegate, I believe you accidentally said 13-309. I believe it's 23.
23-039.
With the conditions. Thank you. Councilmember Hinton?
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any deliberation?
Madam Mayor, can you pause for just a moment?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, are we ready?
Yes, please.
Do you need those conditions read into the record?
Yes, please.
Okay, alrighty. Councilmember Applegate, would you like to read those conditions into the record, or I can do it? Okay, staff would recommend conditional approval of resolution 23-039, conditionally approving the Mesa Ridge Metropolitan Districts number three through five service plan, subject to the condition that any resolution or order adopted by the Mesa Ridge Metropolitan Districts number one and two, excluding territory that will become part of Mesa Ridge Metropolitan Districts number three through five, included provision that the exclusion will not become effective until such time as Mesa Ridge Metropolitan Districts number one and two, Cross Creek Metropolitan District, and the city have entered into one or more intergovernmental agreements that are acceptable to the city and that allocate an appropriate share of the cost for the design, construction, operation, and maintenance of the Hail Reservoir and the Cross Creek Regional Park to Mesa Ridge Metropolitan Districts numbers three through five, and provide a mechanism for funding said costs. Okay, that is the motion we have on the floor. Seeing no further deliberation, please vote. Seven yes. Motion carried. Okay, I'm opening a public hearing on resolution 23-040, a resolution approving a service plan for the Corvallis Metropolitan Districts number one through four.
Thank you. Good evening. Christie Martinez with the City of Fountain Planning Department again. This public hearing is very similar to the previous one, but considering a metropolitan district service plan for Corvallis Districts number one through four. Similar to the previous one, it is also a Title 32 district and a multi-district structure to allow for the phased installation of the public improvements within the district boundaries and to provide the ongoing operation and maintenance for the district functions. The Corvallis development is generally located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Mark Shuffle Road and Fontaine, and consists of approximately 297 acres. Within the district boundaries, they're proposing 1,994 residential units and 35 acres of commercial. The overall development plan for Corvallis was previously approved by city council in July of 2021, and then the addition of the Corvallis Lacy Parcel in April of 2022. Very similar to the overarching themes and purpose of the metropolitan district is to provide the funding mechanism and ongoing maintenance for public improvements. This area is also within the Whitefield Water and Sanitation District, so the water mains and sanitary sewer mains would be accepted by that district, while the city would be accepting any street improvements for the public roadways. Any of the private improvements associated within the, that are developed by the developer and transferred to the metropolitan district would be similar to the previous one, being parks and drainage and the ongoing operations for that. Again, all of the debt incurred by the districts would need to be discharged and repaid within 40 years from the date of the issuance. And again, no city funds are utilized for the issuance of the debt. As I mentioned, there are three districts proposed within this service plan. Districts one and two, or one through, excuse me, there's four districts. Districts one through three is residential. Districts one is approximately 99 acres. District two is 108, and District three is 53. District one is this area here on the eastern boundary. District two is in this middle section, with District three being the yellow on the western boundary. For purposes of orientation, Mark Shuffle Road runs along the eastern boundary on the right-hand side of the screen, and Fontaine is their northern boundary at the top of the screen. This also, this district's service plan is also set up to model the adopted city's model service plan with a maximum aggregate mill levy of 45 mills, 35 mills for debt, and 15 mills for operation. Again, it can modify through all that, as long as it doesn't exceed the maximums that are established. And District four are the three areas in green, which are planned for the commercial acres. Acreage, which is approximately 35 acres. And it has, this is proposing the maximum aggregate of 60 mills. Again, 50 mills for debt and a maximum of 15 for the ongoing operation and maintenance. The Corvallis Metropolitan Districts number one through four service plan also complies with the statutory requirements outlined in 32-1203 of the Colorado Vice Statutes. The full review criteria are outlined within your staff report and also included within your service plan. Again, this district does provide the sufficient existing and projected need for the organization. The district is capable of providing the economical and sufficient service for the services that it will be providing. The area within the district boundaries does have the financial ability to discharge all of the proposed indebtedness within the reasonable basis outlined in the service plan, and that the service plan itself is substantially compliant with the city's master plan. All of the public notice requirements have also been met by the petitioner by notifying all of the property owners and any existing municipality and special district that issued ad valorem taxes within three miles of the district boundaries. Tonight's staff would recommend approval of resolution 23-040, which would be approving the Corvallis Metropolitan Districts one through four service plan. Again, city council may also approve it conditionally or may deny the service plan.
Are there questions for staff? Okay, is there any questions from councilmembers for Christie? Okay, seeing none, do we have the petitioner here?
Yes, Mr. Russ Dykstra is back again.
All right, please come up and state your name for the record.
Russ Dykstra, Spencer Fane again, on behalf of the petitioners. I'm doing a twofer tonight, so this is a great opportunity. Again, we do have a presentation, and I think to address your question, I'll anticipate it, but just for the information of council, we are projecting right now with the current mill levy, the taxes for a $425,000, which is our, about the median of what we're projecting in this project, is $2,215, and with the district added in there, it'll be $3,582. So approximately $1,300 a year, and that's how development is paying its way through these districts. The number of districts is needed, as we just saw with Mesa Ridge. Things happen, economies slow down, markets slow down. And it allows us to phase things accordingly, rather than having to issue more debt than is necessary upfront, so we can just pay for what we need at any given time based on demand. So that's why there's more districts here, as well as differentiating the commercial district. Again, we agree with staff's findings as far as meeting the statutory criteria. And I'm available for any questions you may have. We also have the financial underwriter here, as well as the development team, should you have any questions.
Okay, does anyone from council have any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so do we have any members from the public that have any questions or comments on this project? Please come down and state your name for the record.
Penny Chaminot. I must be really confused, because I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, you guys need money for roads, right? You've allotted $750,000 for roads, but we're taking on more. Is that what I'm hearing?
Christie, or Todd, would you like to handle that?
No. So this is a separate district. There are no city funds, any indebtedness taken on by the city. Any indebtedness occurred would be fully on the developers of this area, and then any future residents that live within the district boundaries. The city is not assuming any indebtedness or taking on any debt associated with the development.
And no money's come out of the $750,000 to maintain these roads and provide for them?
No, the property is currently vacant.
In the future.
I believe her question is, in the future, who would maintain the roads?
In the future, any public roadways would be the city's responsibility.
With a budget of $750,000, correct?
That's today's budget, yes. But these roads, do you come with a, what, how long is the warranty on them at the beginning? After our city inspector passes them?
Two, two-year industry warranty.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Estes?
And these roads would also be bringing in more tax funding, so that we, as we acquire more roads, we can increase that road budget.
They would, as long as we do that, yes, they would.
Please come down and state your name for the record.
Connie Wiesenhent. So my question is, this was approved in July of 2021, and so you're going to approve it again tonight, is that right? Or finalize it? So in that, how many more, oh, should I be asking them?
No, it's okay.
Okay. So in that, how many more police officers, firehouses, schools, parks are added to this community? Because it sounds like this is the second new community coming in, but I think there's also one more, right?
Okay, well, Ms. Martinez is getting up.
Hi.
Hi.
I didn't mean to chase you off. You can still stay here if you wanted to. I'm utilizing his presentation, so bear with me. So the first phase, again, Mark Shuffle on the eastern boundary, on the right-hand side, and Fontaine along the northern boundary. Their first phase is along the eastern side. They will be constructing the major roadway that's on the north-south roadway here to be an extension of Larson Boulevard with participation of the future Signal at Mark Shuffle. In terms of the public safety site, there is a public safety site located in this general vicinity that will be deeded to the city for a future public safety center. And then, as I mentioned, it will be a phased development towards the west with varying housing products.
Christie, talk about the public safety improvement fee as well, and the traffic impact fee, please.
So with any new development in the city, whether it's commercial or residential, multifamily, they are all subject to participation in a transportation impact fee in addition to a public safety impact fee. Those are all collected at the time of building permit for every, currently every single-family residential. Public safety fee is about $2,000-ish dollars. And then the single-family detached home for a transportation impact fee is approximately $3,600 at this time. Both of those fees are reviewed by city council annually and then adjusted in, up or down based upon the market.
And Connie, just to let you know on those, we just implemented those two years ago, maybe. So in the history of Fountain, those weren't available to build that necessary infrastructure that you questioned about until two years ago. So now we're making sure that when these new communities come in, they are going to be putting money towards those type of facilities.
Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, I think she also had a question about school impact. Is there going to be a school there, or is that going to impact the present schools that we have now?
This area is within the Whitefield School District three. When we were considering the overall development plan, the developers were working with Whitefield School District with the dedication of a future 12-acre school site in this location, kind of the southern area, just north of the Glenette-Whitefield.
Okay. And each of those houses coming in, Todd will be paying into a mill levy, right?
It's basically an impact fee, as well as a mill levy. Yeah, long-term into a mill levy as well. But that was the whole point of implementing those, so that it goes specifically to facilities, as well as the traffic impact fee to larger traffic projects that were identified in our master transportation plan.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Are there any other further questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close this public hearing and bring it back up to the dais. And for further deliberation, or what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Corey?
Oh, he rang in first.
Okay, I can't tell, because the map is up there, so I can't tell who rang in first. Okay, Councilmember Rick?
Unless someone has deliberation, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Move to approve resolution 23-040.
Okay, Councilmember Corey?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval for resolution 23-040. Is there any further discussion or deliberation? Seeing none, please vote. Seven yes. Motion carried. Okay, that takes us on to item E, resolution number 23-042, a resolution of the city council of the City of Fountain, Colorado, authorizing the ordering in 2020, of the City of Fountain, Colorado, authorizing the ordering in 2023 of fire department vehicles to be delivered in 2024. Chief Graham?
Good evening, mayor and council. This item that we're bringing to you this evening is very similar to the item that you saw at the last council meeting that the police department brought to you. Essentially, we've got two vehicles, two staff vehicles, that are coming due at the end of their lease next year. And so part of the strategy moving forward that I'm looking at for our staff vehicle situation, and what I'm ultimately going to ask for is authorization to go ahead and order the two replacement vehicles, and then we would pay for them in 2024, start the new lease. But in addition to that, also purchase the two existing vehicles that we have right now. They're both low mileage, they're both already set up, have the lights, have the radios, have everything we need. One potential, for one of those vehicles would be for an additional staff vehicle, and the other one would be used for a reserve. We currently don't have any reserve command vehicles in our fleet. And so when, say for example, the battalion chief vehicle has to go to the shop for maintenance or whatever, we don't really have a reserve vehicle for them to get into. Right now, our practice is for me to loan them my vehicle, which is fine, I have no issue with that. But we don't, we don't really have a backup vehicle at this time for our command units, so.
Before we get to questions, I'm going to make a correction. I read item E into the record and skipped D, so we'll come back to that. Okay, but I just want to make a correction that I, we're working on resolution number 23-042. So I just want to make that correction for the record and for council, so that we're all on the same page. Okay? All right. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. That's pretty much it. Mr. Tom Plara from Fleet is here. If you have any questions for him, he's helped me kind of put this strategy together. But certainly stand for any questions.
No, we're on it. Okay, Councilmember Rick?
So one of these vehicles is a command vehicle, and what's the second vehicle?
Essentially, it would be a staff, just another staff vehicle. So the two vehicles that are coming due on their lease right now is the one that I currently drive, and the other one is the one that the battalion chiefs are currently using. So we would replace those and then move those two that are currently in those positions to, one would be reserve status, and one would be potentially for another staff position, which will be the next item we come up to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any further questions on item E from anybody on council? Okay, any questions from anybody in the audience on item E? Okay, seeing none, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Duncan? Oh, I'm sorry, councilmember Rick?
Move to approve Resolution 23-042.
And councilmember Estes?
Second.
Okay, all righty, we have a motion and a second on the floor for Resolution, Resolution Number 23-042. All in favor, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried. Okay, now we will go back to item D, so you might as well just stay up here. Resolution Number 23-041, a resolution authorizing the creation of an emergency medical services supervisor titled EMS Division Chief, utilizing Medicaid reimbursement without increasing costs to the general fund and a reassignment of rank initiative. Chief Graham?
Thank you, ma'am. As council, you're aware that I've been here for almost a year, largely in observation and evaluation mode. Throughout that year, I've discovered that there are many, many positive things within the Fountain Fire Department, definitely more positive than negatives. One of the needs slash opportunities that I've identified within the department that I'm coming to you tonight, will continue to bring the department more in line with current professional fire service models that are currently utilized across the nation. In the last several years, with the support of the council, within the rank structure, we have established the rank of battalion chief. We've progressed from a largely volunteer organization to an exclusively paid department, and through the support, again, of this council and the voters in the community approving the 2B ballot measure, we have grown the workforce within the fire department. In my mind, what I'm proposing tonight is just the next natural progression step in the process of modernizing our fire department. So really, what we're talking about tonight is twofold. First, one of the biggest issues that I've discovered is, within the department, I believe it's time for our EMS supervisor to be moved to a 40-hour workweek position. Historically, the EMS supervisor has been a shift employee. Being a shift employee, he's not, not only been responsible for all things pertaining to EMS, but also having to staff an ambulance and/or an engine at the same time. This has resulted in extremely heavy workload, as well as undue overtime burden on the city's budget. The time and work required to effectively, fully manage EMS division has increased to the point where a 40-hour employee, in my opinion, is absolutely necessary. So the recommendation tonight is approval of the establishment of a new position within the Medicaid reimbursement fund, that will be the EMS supervisor, like you mentioned. My preference would be that this position would be titled Division Chief of EMS. Subsequently, the current position that's on shift right now, that's funded by the, the general fund, would be retitled to Lieutenant, and we would hold a promotional process to assign that person to that position. The second piece of what I'm proposing is a retitling initiative that will again continue to bring our department into alignment with current fire service practice. What I'd like to do is retitle the current training captain and fire marshal also to Division Chief. This will standardize and straighten out the rank structure and organization chart of the department, and the title of Division Chief more accurately represents the job duties and responsibilities that they currently have. So if we go to the, the next slide there, this is a, a representation of our current organizational chart. This doesn't tell the whole story as to the, I don't want to say dysfunction of this chart, but this isn't the optimum organizational chart for a department our size. Just a few notes there. If you see to the bottom left, the ambulance service EMS, with him being on shift right now, he has, essentially has to answer to two different supervisors when he's on shift. He answers to a battalion chief at the same time for all of his EMS division responsibilities, he has to answer to me. And so we've got a division of labor issue when it comes to him having multiple supervisors. The proposal tonight would iron some of that out, and ultimately get a more linear organizational chart. If you go to the next slide. Each of these positions, as you see, we've got our battalion chiefs on the left, those three, those are already established and in practice right now, who oversee each one of the shifts that are responsible for emergency services delivery. To the right, the other three, already established positions within the department. However, this is where the retitling initiative comes in, to label them Division Chiefs. As you can see, a much more streamlined, linear organizational chart. Each position will have very specific roles and responsibilities within the department, but will also have the ability to provide a broad range of service to not just me, but the other department members and our community. Generally, departments our size and even much smaller employ an assistant or deputy chief. Obviously, here in Fountain, we do not have this. This adjustment to the rank structure buys us some time before it becomes absolutely necessary to add another command level position. And when I say buys us some time, I would say buys us some years before we would have to add another command level position. This will also streamline our org chart, as I've mentioned, removing any question or obscurity as to the chain of command, which does somewhat currently exist. This is just kind of merely scratching the surface. I could go on and on about the, the benefits of these adjustments, and I'm certainly willing to do so, but I'll pause now and answer any questions.
Councilmember Hinton?
Sure, I just have a quick comment. Chief, so I appreciate your due diligence. I appreciate you taking the time to make an assessment correctly that will benefit the best city. So I want to make sure I give people their flowers. There are people out there that like to do a lot of negative, but I want to make sure we, we point out the good things that are happening here in the city versus the negatives, so I appreciate you doing your due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rick?
Yes, chief. So we've got, correct, help me understand and correct me if I'm wrong. We're going to have a fire marshal who's a division chief. We're going to have a division chief who's in charge of training, and a division chief who's in charge of EMS. Is that correct?
It's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and on your previous motion, you requested a vehicle. Is that going to be shared between them, or how is that going to be used?
So in, ultimately, what we'll do is, one of the vehicles that we would, that are, that we currently have within the fleet, that we would purchase at a very reasonable price, would be assigned to the EMS division chief.
Okay, and what's, help me understand what he's going to be doing with that, because if the training chief has a vehicle, and the training chief is going around to the different shifts and the different
Sure.
fire stations, why do I need a vehicle for EMS?
Good question. So part of the responsibilities for these division chiefs is to provide not just administrative work on a day-to-day basis, budgets, quality assurance, teaching classes, those sorts of things. There are also still responders out in the field for a number of reasons. I'll start with general overall safety. Currently, NFPA standards require that we respond a safety officer on certain calls. So take, for example, if my house was on fire, that would meet the criteria for responding a, an incident safety officer. That is outside of the battalion chief and any of the responders that are currently on the trucks. They all, they have their own jobs to do when they get on scene that don't necessarily include incident safety officers. So within this rank structure, two of these division chiefs, both the EMS division chief and the training/safety division chief, will, will share the burden of responding to these target hazards as the incident safety officer. Basically, what that looks like, if we don't split that up, we're going to have one guy that's consistently, constantly on call 24/7/365. And so this would give us the flexibility and the ability to help share that responsibility and more consistently respond a safety officer to the calls that we're required to do so. Not only is this a functional safety requirement for them to be on scene, to have an extra set of eyes as the safety officer, also helps increase our response numbers as far as ISO is concerned, so we could potentially reflect one additional consistent member responding to a structured fire as required for NFPA. It also helps, you know, B.C. Lynn's here with us, he can speak to this. I won't call him up here because he'd throw something at me, but our battalion chiefs respond to calls with our engines multiple times a day, and it's not uncommon for, at that very same timeframe, to have another call that would ordinarily require a battalion chief to respond. This, this will give us a flexibility and ability to respond an admin chief-level position that are trained to the same level as the battalion chiefs to help fill in those, those voids.
So if I understand you correctly, we're scheduling them for a 40-hour week. However, they may be called upon to, you know, in the middle of the night, respond to a, a fire and be a safety officer, just like a battalion chief, just like somebody on shift.
That, that's a correct assessment. So if they're at home in bed with their wife and kids, and they get the page for a, a call that requires a safety officer, they'll be getting out of bed and heading to that call.
Okay, and since they have, since we have, would have the vehicle, they wouldn't have to drive to a particular location to get the, the vehicle. They would just have it there with them, and they could respond immediately.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, councilmember Hinton.
And then based off that question, this is within guidance of the inspection that we just recently had, would that be an additional or within guidance of that?
You know, I would stop short of saying that it would be within the guidance of, of that inspection. However, I can tell you that when it comes to us providing the information of our response model to ISO, that's taken into account. And so he'll look at the number of calls that we respond to safety officer to, and, and inversely, the calls that we do not. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Duncan?
I just want to thank you for your forward thinking, because, you know, I'm looking at our firefighters out there several times a day. We, you know, we have people that are on their phones, and, and we know that's an increase in the accidents, and I don't, you know, you didn't come with those numbers, but we know that it has increased. I see two to three accidents at Mesa Ridge a day, and, and they're there. I have made the, the U-turn, and, and our firefighters are there. So, you know, I appreciate the, the forward thinking, and not only that, they don't just cover Fountain, right? And so we lend our services to, to our neighbors, and, and so we have to have the ability to do that, and I appreciate your forward thinking.
Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate you taking the time to answer the question we get quite often, is why do they take their cars home? And I think that really, really shows, in the, if your house is burning down, and you don't want him to drive all the way to the station to pick up his cars, so that he can come to your house and be that safety officer, we need those extra eyes and ears there as quickly as we can get them, get them there. So thank you for taking time to explain that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so any just questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Estes?
I just want to point out also that this says utilizing Medicaid reimbursement without increasing costs to the general fund.
That is correct. And so what our plan is, through the guidance of the finance department and our new finance director, is to establish that position within the Medicaid fund. And I think this is probably worth mentioning, that is beneficial in two different ways. One, right now, in the very beginning, it has no impact on the general fund, which is good. We all, you know, cheer for that. In the long term, the, the way that Medicaid fund works is the, the more you pay, the more of our bills that we pay out of that money, ultimately, the more money we see in return. And so this is going to be a win on both fronts there.
Okay, does anybody in the audience have any questions? Please come down and state your name.
I'm Fran Carrick at 10755 Shumway. I didn't hear, I'm sure you have a rule about this, but I didn't get up in time. I didn't hear any figures for these vehicles, that, what are they going to cost, and how many of them are there?
The vehicles was the previous motion? The one we're on right now is, is the position of
I know, but we've talked about vehicles, so if there's a rule that I can ask this now.
No, I, I just wanted to make sure that
Yeah, I do understand.
But we can, he can go back and answer that, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
And these, these figures have been provided to us from, to Mr. Polarev from our leasing company. And so for one of the vehicles, the command vehicle, which is including all of the, the vehicle itself, plus all the equipment that goes on it, lights, radios, our MDT, our computer stands and everything, the payments annually on that is just under $21,000. And that's, that's an annual payment.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And then the other one, which would be a, a little less expensive unit, but still outfitted, is $1,160 per month, for a total of $13,929 annually.
And then we're going to keep the other two vehicles? Are we going to buy out that lease?
Correct, and that was the, that was the proposal, was we feel like we can get those vehicles a year from now for about $10,000 apiece. And they're five-year-old vehicles with about, you know, 30,000 miles. The other option would be to turn those back in.
If you have a question, come on over the mics, we can
So 30,000 miles, I mean, that doesn't seem like a lot to me, when we live in a, sort of a, a middle-income town, and very few of us renew our leases every two years, and we don't, if we only have 30,000 miles on them. You know, I, I put lots of miles on my car. How does that, how does that equate with these emergency vehicles?
Well, I would say probably, miles for miles are, our miles are a little bit harder than, I know the, the miles that the battalion chiefs put on their unit are harder miles than, say, my wife would put on our, our personal vehicle, as it pertains to, you know, both fuel usage and, and maintenance in the long run.
Chief, would you like me just to kind of explain real quick on how our lease program works?
Sure.
In terms of
Sure.
You betcha. So when we enter that program, Fran, we have to make that decision when that lease is up, whether we purchase the vehicle back for that low amount, or we turn that vehicle in, someone else purchases that vehicle, and we get those funds. So once we enter that lease agreement, we have to make a decision when that lease contract is up.
And how many leased vehicles do we have within the city?
We went away from purchasing old vehicles when I was chief. So we started the lease program in public safety itself back in probably 2012, which has saved us a tremendous amount of money on maintenance. We don't have to purchase the old junker vehicles from other governments like we were doing back then. So we've got a professional fleet, a dependable fleet, and it basically takes our funding from having to pay the capital costs. We lease those, as the chief said, for those payments.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else with questions in the audience? Okay, seeing none, what would council like to do? Councilmember Estes?
I move to approve Resolution Number 23-041.
Okay, councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further deliberation from council? Seeing none, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Takes us on to item F, Resolution Number 23-043, a resolution amending the appropriation of fiscal year 2023 budgeted funds. You are not Mr. Lewis.
I am not.
I got something right tonight, huh? I'm not getting a massive headache up here, so I'm trying to keep going. Okay, all righty.
Good evening, Mayor and council, and I am Shawna Dale, the Deputy Finance Director. Unfortunately, Mr. Lewis is out ill today, so I am stepping in. And currently, what's going around, we have realized that there was unintentionally, the final line on the attachment was omitted, so this is the correct Exhibit A to go with the budget amendment. Okay, so city council adopted the 20, the fiscal year 2023 budget in November of 2022, and since then, it has been amended four times in 2023 for various items. And throughout our operations during the year, we have been made aware of other necessary expenditures and revenues that need to be, or the revenues and correspondence and revenues that need to be, or the revenues and corresponding expenses, I apologize, that go along with it. These primarily include the recording of additional public safety restricted revenue in accordance with the committed funds made in the 2B ballot measure, and as well as grants and lease proceeds in the water and electric funds. See if I can. So this supplementary budget request process is a standard process and a best practice. That way, it ensures that only items that are appropriated by council are spent, and the recommended items within the above-mentioned funds are included in the attachment, the new one that you just received, an Exhibit A. So on the the top part of that exhibit, you have the general fund, and we have the additional $850,000 in the 2B public safety property tax revenue that we would like to recognize as revenue, along with a miscellaneous grant for $2,200. The expenses, there are a few miscellaneous expenses, $10,000 for maintenance service contracts for PD, for TASER agreements, as well as about $34,000 in improvements to the Fountain Valley News Building, which we have purchased. Overall, if you look at the bottom highlighted in yellow, you'll see that the increase in the restricted 2B reserves is the $850,000 in additional property tax revenue, and the overall decrease in the unrestricted unassigned reserves is $55,000. That does not use any of the public safety fund balance. Going on to the water fund, this is actually a net zero in the net position because we have $429,000 coming in in grant revenue from the county for ARPA funding, and then the expenditures are capital improvements that are tied to the Fountain Reservoir project that are all funded by that ARPA grant from the county. In the electric fund, we only have an increase in the revenues, the miscellaneous revenue, which is the Guzman reimbursement for the purchased power that was part of the agreement that increases every year, that's about $132,000 every month that we receive from Guzman to offset our power costs, and then some other grants and capital lease proceeds for the solar array project. So overall, the increase, it's a net increase to the electric fund. In the ambulance fund, the only amendment we have is approximately $35,000 in salaries, and that is tied to the position that was just approved, presented by Chief Graham, and that is out of the Medicaid funding. Finally, on the insurance fund, we have approximately $17,000 in miscellaneous revenue coming in from SIRS, and the offset to that is $25,000 in expenses, and that is for screenings for our police officers. Those are tied together because SIRS has agreed to fund that project at two-thirds, which is why we're getting $17,000 from them, so the city is only on the hook for the other $8,500. So with that, staff would recommend that you would formally approve the Resolution 23-043 for the budget amendment of the 2023 fiscal year budget, pending any questions.
Councilmember Rick?
Two questions.
Sure.
First is for Chief Cristiani. Let's brief, three new SROs, is that for here in Fountain, or is that the three SROs for Fort Carson?
Yes, sir, that's the three SROs prediction for Fort Carson, as long as that comes to fruition in the next year or so.
Okay, so we won't hire them until we've got the IGA with Fort Carson and it's all been approved.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, if you could, ma'am.
Sure.
If memory serves me, we've done a bunch of improvements to the Fountain Valley News Building.
Yeah.
If you could shoot me an email the next week or so, give me a total.
Absolutely.
For what we've put into that.
Sure.
I would, I'm starting to get concerned. I think this is like the second or third bill we've got for improvements, and I want to keep track of it.
Okay, not a problem.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any further questions from anyone else on council? Okay, any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay, please come down and state your name for the record.
Hi. Connie Weisenhut. Could you talk a little bit about the acronym, the ARPA, what that stands for? And then grant money, because there's so much that comes in, is it always put into the budget? Or, I mean, I would think that grant money is gifted or applied for, and so we're adding it into the budget, and can you talk a little bit about that and why?
Absolutely. So the ARPA or ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act that was implemented by the federal government after COVID, and the county was the recipient of a significant amount of that, and so they decided to do a pass-through and help out our water department with the $429,000 that was presented on previous, this one here.
And those are, those are restricted funds that can only be used for certain things?
Correct, and since it's a pass-through, it's actually a federal grant, so actually we will be subject to a single audit, which will be part of our financial statements at the end of '23. And then as far as grant revenue being budgeted, we do, if we know that we are going to get a grant, then we do have to show it as budgeted revenue so that we can spend it on correlating expenses as well. So I hope that answers your question. You're welcome.
Was that all your question? Okay. Councilmember Hinton?
I just have a quick question for Todd. Todd, if you can just tell me, recite off the top of your head, how much grant money that you've been part of facilitate to bring in for the city? If you can just kind of tell me that real quick.
In the last few years.
In the last few years.
Let's see, we're, I know we're going to talk about 22 million here in the next project overview, then we've got the 10 million from Link Road that we negotiated with, so over 30 million in the last few years.
Yeah, and I could ask the same question all the way down the line for everybody in the staff, and that pretty much probably pays for your salary over the next. If you would have did that.
Oh, somebody actually did the numbers on Link Road, so just the Link Road project would pay my salary for 66 years.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I remember that number.
We all heard it, he's here for the next 66 years, so. And just one thing on the electric fund down here on Revenue 4339, other grants, remaining grants from the solar array, there seems to be some discussion on social media that we raise the rates to pay for that solar array, and that solar array is is been done with grants, correct?
Correct, it was funded by a capital lease proceeds, we did not raise rates at all, and then we actually received a DOLA grant to pay for the majority of it, which this is the rest of that DOLA grant. So the previous part of the DOLA grant was already budgeted in 2022, so this is just the remainder now that we have final numbers for 2023.
Okay. Todd, is that up and running yet? The solar array, is that up and running yet? Last I heard, we were waiting on a couple parts.
Yeah, I believe, I believe it's up. No, it's, it's near completion, so they're just waiting for some final parts to come in, and then it will be complete, and there'll actually be a ribbon-cutting ceremony when it's done here, so I expect that in the next, you know, but before the end of the year. And we also are putting out a media release regarding the funding of that solar field that explains kind of how it all works and the guarantees that are in place that the city has with the contractor that built it to ensure that there is an actual positive return for the city.
Okay, great, look forward to that. Thank you very much. All right. Okay, any further questions on this budget amendment? Okay, seeing none, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Estes?
I move to approve Resolution Number 23-043.
Okay, Councilmember Hinton?
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, that takes us on to item G, 2024 Public Works Project Overview. Mr. Evans?
Counsel, appreciate it. We're attempting a split screen for the first time, so I know you've got a sheet in front of you, but we want to make sure that everyone kind of understands what the project is and where it's going to occur in the city. And what we felt was, 2024 is going to be extremely busy year for public works projects, and because some of them have been delayed, one of them for, has been in the works for 14 years, but they are all going to start in some way, shape, or form in what you've got in front of you. So I'm going to walk everybody through those. We thought it was a good time, as you're going to start the budget process, beginning of October, these are going to come up on your radar, and we want to make sure you had something to refer to, so please keep that sheet that I gave you for that budget process, as they come up, you can refer back to it. So as you can see on your sheet, we've broken these up, and those folks here can see them, we've broken them up by departments and who's kind of over each of the projects and what they're going to accomplish and what they're going to do. So I'm glad Shawna discussed, and that was a good question, on the ARPA funds, because we are using some of that. So as you're going to see on this sheet, basically, we've got the department that's responsible, we have the project, and the name of the project or where it's located, as you move across a short description of the projects, the total budget or costs of the projects, the grant-funded or other funds that are coming in to fund these projects, a city match, because some of these are going to go to some questions that were answered earlier, that we've pulled from the general fund that aren't included in that yearly streets budget, and then also just a timeline for everybody to take a look at as well. So the first project is the Indiana Railroad Crossing, which you've heard over multiple years. Our bid process, our second bid process closes next Monday, so we will have another contractor onboard next week. They will be selected, and again, we plan on starting the Indiana project in October of this year. So if it doesn't start in October, it it better hit be November by the time I get back, but we all know what that description is, there will be a lighted intersection at 8587, a new crossing for the railroad, and then it will connect down at Old Pueblo as well. So that's something, that total project cost, just a reminder, when that project was bid out back in 2009, the expected costs were going to be 750 to 1.5 million, they have now risen to, we expect to be either just under or just over 5 million. We won't know an exact until, again, we get those bids in next week. The grant funding that you can see over on the next, the next area, we've got $3.5 million in funding that's coming in through grants, PVACG and federal highway funding, those are extremely difficult to deal with when you have federal highway, there's a lot of cost that comes with having to maintain and manage those grants, but we're going to push forward with this one. The city match or a match of 700, just under 750,000, that's coming from developer funds that we worked with Ventana on approving their southern project that they're building houses on now. They've funded that match, so that will come from developer funding, not general fund funding. We also have the remaining, if we need the funds, we have Moving Fountain Forward that will be utilized on this if need be. We hope not, but we're going to try to get that under, under budget, we're going to find out. Any questions on Indiana? Okay, the next is Jimmy Campin Ohio Road, that was another Moving Fountain Forward project. We have pre-ordered the poles, as we know how long those are taking, so we've got those in, we are ready to move forward with constructing the intersection. It will be a span wire light, similar to what we have at Fountain Mesa and CNS. The plan is, we will utilize the Moving Fountain Forward money that we hopefully save off of Indiana, and we will use, utilize that money to build Jimmy Campin Ohio intersection. There is no city match, we put it under the same column, but District 8 is contributing $120,000 towards that light as a joint venture with the city to get that intersection completed. We still have some right-of-way that we will need to purchase and complete, we don't want to start that process and really can't till we ensure that we have the funding in place with the Moving Fountain Forward funds. Any questions on Jimmy Campin Ohio? Okay, we'll move on to Link Road. The engineering portion of the Link Road rebuild, so that will be from Kane Ranch to the south, we cannot tell you where that's going to end because we don't know what's going to happen with construction costs. So you can see the budget there for Link Road at 5.6 million dollars. The city match is only $330,000, so that's a 5.6 million dollar grant. So that's another grant that Councilman Hinton was speaking of. This one will start engineering next year, we are going to have to see, once that's fully engineered out, how far down south on Link Road that we can go. Don't expect there won't be any other lanes, there won't be any other sidewalks, any of those other type of improvements to Link Road, because if we did that, we would eat up that 5.6 million from Kane probably before we even got to the hill near Little Ranches. So we're going to use that money to rebuild as much as road as, of that road as we can. Any questions on Link Road? And that, $330,000, that was budgeted this year, the council approved that, so that would be additional general fund monies that are going to the roads on top of that 750 that was budgeted. Fountain Creek in Southmore. Fountain Creek Watershed District was here tonight, Tamara's very involved in this project. Basically, what this is, is this is a project that we hope will enable us to open Southmore, but we don't know, we don't know that at this point. It's in the engineering phase, so that will be put as improvements on the creek itself in the area of the problem issue that we're having. Do I think it's going to fix all the problems down there at that number? I do not. So I don't think that number's going to be a fix-all, and I see Tamara shaking her head in the affirmative as well. That would probably be double, if not triple that, to solve all the problems in that corner. So we are going to work with the Watershed District, we appreciate that that project is in place, that's a $4 million grant, and our city match is $600,000, which we are using ARPA funds for the city match, so that is not coming out of the general fund as well. We had a, Christie and I had a nice discussion with the homeowners that are directly across the Bud family today, they've been actually great to work with ever since we had the issues with Southmore and had to close it down, so we're going to keep them fully aware and involved with that process as well, as the American Legion as well. Tamara, did you have anything you'd like to add on that?
No, the last I heard, we were waiting on the engineering and permitting, the last, we hadn't heard.
You are correct.
Yet on the engineering, on the permits.
That's correct, they're still in the engineering phase of that, and as we all know, we've seen it down on Hanson Trail, we've seen it further south, some of these projects are successful along that creek and some of them are not, so there's no guarantees. The King Supers area, the King Supers area, you can see our budget is zero on this because all of this will be paid for by the developers. If you look over from 8587, you can see that Mesa Road, the lifts are completed on Mesa Road, so this portion has been rebuilt. Healy Road, which will go from Mesa Ridge down to Mesa itself, that has been completed, all of the infrastructure, the stormwater, everything under that road, and the road has now been paved. King Supers, as King Supers comes in, right where Christie is showing you here, that portion of Syracuse will be rebuilt, there'll be a roundabout that will go into that area, and then they'll also have to do additional improvements to Syracuse and Mesa Ridge. All of that will be funded by the developer, I wanted to put it on this list, even though we don't have any match on that, as it will be another large construction project that you'll see work on in 2024. Any questions on that?
Lot of people, oh, a lot of people are just asking when Syracuse potentially might be back open again.
So we're trying to look at the timing right now, it, we will probably open Syracuse and Mesa for a few months before King Super starts on that, but we're looking at the timing and when they're going to get that done. They want to start moving dirt out on that King Supers location in the next month, month and a half, so what we don't want to do is open it up for a month and then shut it down again, that just adds to additional frustration. So we're looking at it now, and if we're able to, let's say, three months, then we'll open it back up for a reasonable amount of time, but it will be shut down again once they start rebuilding it.
Okay, Councilmember Duncan?
I don't know if you can answer this question, but we've been hearing a lot about King Supers becoming this mega, you know, grocery chain, so is Albertson's, the, I mean, is it Albertson's, is it Safeway going to continue to stay Safeway, or is it going to be King Supers?
No clue.
Okay.
Yeah, no clue, we, as we've discussed with the King Supers folks, the, at least the regional and the state folks that I've had discussions with, they're really not sure at this point, I don't believe. So they do plan on building, I can't remember the term, Christie, you might, the big King Super store is going to go in there, their, their biggest.
A King Supers marketplace.
Marketplace, is that the term? So marketplace is one of the big ones, but what the impact is going to be on there, now that they've consolidated with Albertson's and Safeway, don't know.
Okay, so my next question is coming out of come and go, it seems like that that heel is a blind spot, and I know we're building, they're, they're, they're building the homes that are coming up behind Walgreens, so is, is there something that could be done? So is, is there something that could be done because you cannot see right there?
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about. So you're talking about where CNS turns into Mesa, that, that hill right there. Look at how they're good back there.
Yeah, it's, yeah, the driveway on the north side of Come and Go and then also on the south side of coming out of like the car wash there.
You know, we will soon be having. A lot of cars coming from that way, right, with King Supers in the building.
So no, we, we don't have any plans to approve, improve that right now. That is the second or third time I've heard about that. So we'll have Bob keep an eye on that and if we have, and we'll let the PD know if they start having any issues there so we can take a look at it on future developments, paying for improvements right there. We'll keep an eye on it.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, Councilmember Rick?
Yeah, I apologize. Statement more than a question.
Sure.
There was an article in the news recently to where King Supers slash Safeway have, are entering into an agreement to sell off some of their stores to, to overcome the antitrust objections. And it is possible the old Safeway may be sold off to the other chain. I'm not saying it will happen, but they're just saying they're, they're looking at entering into agreements to sell off some of their stores to get over the antitrust objections of the state of Colorado.
Which is what we just had happen at the Maverick that was down there.
Yeah.
They consolidated with Come and Go, sold them, and then you saw the name change down there and, and hopefully it will be as nice as that Maverick. Yeah. Okay, let's go down to the next. Let's go to Carson and Highway eighty-five. This is a big project that we've discussed for a couple of years. So this is in the engineering phase right now, and the last word I got from CDOT is they still plan on building a green tea intersection for that neighborhood at Carson and eighty-five, eighty-seven. So as you go across, you can see that that's a two point five million dollar project, and that's a grant that we've worked with CDOT, and CDOT is funding that entire project. We don't have a match on that. Any questions on Carson Highway eighty-five, eighty-seven? Okay. Go ahead, Corey.
Do it. Do we have a TBA of when that will be done? Because I know he said, it says here, construction will start 2024.
I don't have a, to be done, and CDOT usually won't give you one because they'll say it depends on this, that, the weather, this, that, this. So we hope it gets started then. Don't know when it'll finish.
Okay, thank you.
Those green teas, though, they're not, you know, they're not massive construction. So I would hope if they started next summer, especially on a main arterial like that, they'd want to get it done next summer. Get it done quick. The impacts.
Excuse me. I remember when Jason, Jason, was here from CDOT. We, I know we had quite a discussion with the citizens that were here that night, which was great to see him involved. It, don't look for any dirt to be broken for, or, you know, ground broken for at least a year.
You bet.
So I would, you know, so you see people out there doing engineering, but, so yeah, at least a year to break ground from that meeting.
Absolutely. Yep. Old Pueblo.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Duncan, thank you.
So we're not talking about the green tea that we drink, so could you explain the green tea?
So a green tea intersection, let's see how quick Christie is. She's going to pop over to Peterson. And the best example is on the east side of Peterson. You're also starting to see these in other areas of Colorado Springs. But what it is, is it's a controlled intersection that allows folks to take unimpeded turns, and it's controlled by a light. So if you've ever been to that east side on Mark Shuffle of Peterson, this is a green tea intersection. So it's not a traditional full lighted intersection, but it allows folks to come out by the light and take protected turns as they turn in and out. This is up by Peterson. Yeah, this is just an example of what that green tea is. I can't explain it as well as that shows you. If we had a traffic engineer up here, they'd spend ten minutes, but that's, that's what it looks like and, and they're effective. It will, just like roundabouts, it will take a while for people to get used to, but once they do, it'll allow folks safely to get in and out of there. Without running the gauntlet as we call it.
Because when the discussions first started with CDOT with this, there was no light.
Correct.
Right? There was no light. So this, you know, even roundabout got thrown out. That was ten times the amount of money, so.
Correct.
And we've, we've gone from nothing, don't talk to us, it's your problem, to this in a very, very short amount of time.
We did, and Jason's been a big key to that. We thanked him that night. He came and spoke, and we've got a good relationship with him, and I give that gentleman the credit for making it happen for us. Yeah, he really has.
Right, so yeah, pulling into those green tea intersections, making a left is kind of weird and takes a while to get used to because you're crossing into this, if you can go, keep going, Christie, kind of this protected area there, yeah. So you're turning into there and then you, and then you get into the traffic.
It'll take a little getting used to.
There's one up by the Colorado Springs Police Station. If you make a right, like you're going to the Restore, there's one there, and I, every time I get there, I have to stop a second and relieve the attention.
It's, it's similar to what we have up near Walgreens off of Fountain Mesa. When you come over and, and we just have the, the turn there, just one way as you're going in. It takes a little while to get used to, to get over in that lane. It does.
Yeah, but very appreciative of them for coming to the table with that.
Absolutely. And very appreciative we don't have a match with that. So the other down that you see in the gray and Streets Department, the Old Pueblo Bridge and the Bandley, so where it says JCC, that's Jimmy Camp Creek, so Old Pueblo and Jimmy Camp Creek, right down by Ventana. And then we've also got the Bandley Clover Creek. Both of those bridges sustained damage during the storms that we had this summer. So we're getting a grant through the USDA for three and a half million dollars to fix those bridges and the damage that occurred during those storms. That does require a city match of approximately seven hundred thousand dollars, which that will come out of our Jimmy Camp Creek Drainage Fund, which has been accruing over the years. And just an explanation of how that fund accrues money. Every home that's built in the Jimmy Camp Creek Basin, that's a tributary, they have to pay a certain amount to that fund that goes to maintaining Jimmy Camp Creek and these type of projects. So that's how we're going to pay for that city match from there. Any questions on that?
I have a question.
Sure.
A USDA grant, that one just kind of caught me off guard. What does the Department of Agriculture have to do with this?
I don't know, but they offer a grant, and we're going to take advantage of it, Tamara.
It just kind of caught me off guard. I'm like, what?
Yes.
Are you used to that, being your meat?
Yeah, well, there's all other things too, but it's just a different grant.
It is.
It's nice to see us finding other ones.
Yes. This was sent to us by somebody, I don't remember who, but we get sent notifications of these grants all the time. So we looked into it and low and behold, now this one we're going to have, this one will probably be back in front of you pretty quick because they have end-of-the-year monies that they have available for this grant. So we're, we as a city are going to have to move pretty quickly to take advantage of that. So that, that could be back in front of you in October. So Bob will be back in front of you with that. Bob is doing the legwork on this grant and carrying the load on this thing, and he's been filling out paperwork. They've had two onsite audits with the USDA folks and the engineers. So Bob has been knee-deep in this since we had the storms occur.
Councilmember Hinton?
Just as DJ Cali says, another one.
Another one, that's right. That's exactly right. So they're already starting the engineering processes of these. The Bandley, some of those that, some of those folks that drove down I-25, you saw us out. We had that bridge closed during the first storm, I believe it was. And a lot of damage occurred, not only to ours, but this is also Fountain Sanitation had quite a bit of damage along their piping system with that bridge that you can, go up a little closer, Christie, on the right, you can see some of that piping. And a lot of that, that you can see right there where she's pointing at right here. All of this was scoured away during that storm, and Fountain Sanitation has got to go in there and do some, some large repairs as well to that storm. And what happened was we had trees that actually, if you could go to the other side, Christie, to the west, we had trees that came down from Fort Carson that actually lodged in the piping and under the bridge and just collected everything that was coming down off of Fort Carson, which then caused this creek, as they call it, to, to top over the bridge itself. So it was pretty extensive when you got down there. We had to shut that road down for, for several hours during the storm. Bob and his guys were out hanging over this, actually removing the trees as the storm was going on. So they did yeoman's work out there that day just to, just to make sure we didn't lose this entire bridge. Any questions on those? Moving down to the facility side of things, you've heard about the Parks Building for some time. As we all know, we're in the process of, of redeveloping the entire Lorraine School and Center. So part of that is right now, our Parks Department is located in this general area here. You can see some of their trucks. So as that gets redeveloped and that goes away, we need another Parks Building. So we will be utilizing, you can see over here where the dirt has been moved. This is where a smaller facility than what they have right now, but it's all we can, we can afford with that funding. There will be a Parks Building that's built there. It's in the final process of approval with Pike Peak Regional Building. And Shawna, if I remember, these funds, these were all hail damage funds that we got from insurance, correct? Twenty eighteen hailstorms. So we've held that aside, so we're going to be utilizing that money to fund that Parks Building, and we are going to get started on it as soon as possible. Soon as we get those approvals, the Regional Building will start building that Parks Building.
This will get some of our equipment out of the weather, correct?
Some, not a lot. It's not a big building.
No, but some at least.
Some, yes, yes. We will be leaving the Salt Dome that's down here so our Streets Department can use it for the south end of the city and not depend on every time they need to fill up a snowplow running all the way back up to Southmore. So we will continue to use that, so it will be just a little minor city public works facility right here. Any questions? Okay. And we'll go to the final project. Let's go down a little bit, if you could, Christie. And this will be for the Parks Department itself, and this is the Front Range Trail Project. How long has this been going on, Sylvia? Five years? Seven? Seven years? So I'm speaking for Gordy over here. Paul, could you go down on our Public Works Project Sheet on the right side? There we go. So this project will provide a safe and accessible route through Adams Open Space and over the Jimmy Camp Creek, and will connect Adams Open Space to the Christian Open Space in the future. We hope to connect the trail to the Fountain Creek Greenway. So this will be a trail improvement. You can see the total project cost is four hundred and fifty thousand with a two hundred and twenty-five thousand coming from a grant and a city match of two hundred and twenty-five thousand. So the status on this and the timeline, it's out to bid for construction. The entire project should be complete first quarter of 2025. That's what we're hoping. So you can see as we look through these, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine projects that are going to be working. On the match side of things, we're using a combination of general funds that were approved by council for the streets, developer funding for the streets, moving fountain forward money for streets, drainage fees Jimmy Camp, which will go to the bridges, ARPA funding, which will go to the Southmore Project, and then as well as a partnership with School District Eight to assist with the Jimmy Camp and open, Jimmy Camp and Ohio intersection. So I thought it was important that we kind of brief you on those, give you an opportunity as you're going through the budget process. I get confused sometimes and projects go different places in my brain. So I wanted to make sure you had something to refer to, opportunities to ask questions, and it simplified it a little bit as these start flying at you during the budget process. So appreciate your time. If there's any, if there's not any other questions, I'm done.
Councilmember Rick?
I was in your office week two ago. We got a five hundred thousand dollar ADA grant from, for, that Brandy put in, and Ben came in and said, hey, we got this five hundred thousand dollar grant. Don't know where it came from, but we got it.
Yes, yes. So I haven't got the specifics on it yet to be able to brief you on it, but you are correct. We'll put that one on there too, yes.
Brandy, got to give her credit. Brandy Williams put that in.
She did.
To get us.
She did.
Five hundred thousand dollars for Americans with Disabilities Act.
And you know, something I didn't put on here, but we have an ongoing CDBG grant that we get that we put into primarily the Southmore neighborhood. We've worked on the Southmore neighborhood for five, six, seven years. And every year we get about a hundred thousand that we put into those, especially the curb gutter ADA improvements, pedestrian improvements down there. And we've been doing that, and we will continue to do that with the CDBG as well every year. We took a break on that grant this year, but we'll be reapplying for it again next year, and we'll be putting funds. So that's why I had that number available, Councilman Hinton, is I've got it written down here. That's total project cost for about twenty-two million, and then I just read off on our matches. So it's going to be a busy year in 2024, and it's going to be tough to keep up with, and you all will get a lot of complaints as all of these projects start. No, there's no way we can schedule every one of them during when school is out. No, we got to jump on them when we can. They're all grant-related, so we don't control a lot of the timelines. When you get the money, you got to use the money, so our resurfacing and everything will still be planned around schools, but these projects will not. We're just going to have to get these going next year and continue until we can get them completed.
Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, and speaking of grants, I just want people to know that it's not easy to get a grant. There's certain ways that grants have to be written and, and proposed to. So it's not something that you can just say, hey, we want this. And be able to do that, it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of resource, and it takes a lot of individuals to be able to do that. So I appreciate your staff and everybody that goes about trying to get that money to save our citizens money without using a general fund. I appreciate that.
And I've, I've been really vocal, and I will again on this with everybody. These grants are going to help us improve a lot of areas, but you cannot replace city infrastructure with grants. As one thing that's missing out of all these grants is something to help our neighborhoods. There is not grants out there. They just don't allow us to use grants to go in and fix Heritage or Cross Creek or Little Ranches and all the infrastructure. They're not out there. These are to improve pretty much major arterials. So we have no ability to go out there. You can't run a city based off of grants. You just can't. We have to have funding resources.
Councilmember Duncan?
I just want to say to Todd to thank you because I know that anytime any citizen or any one of us wants to go out and look at these projects, that you're willing to do that, and I appreciate, out of all the other duties that you have,
You bet.
that you take time out and any citizens that would like to go out, that you're, that you are more than available and willing, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, hundred percent, anytime. Happy to do it. Yeah.
One of the difficulties of grants is we could apply for a whole ton of them, but there's a ton of paperwork that goes with grants too. So we have to really, really balance if we have the staff power to, to do all the paperwork and everything that's required with these grants because they want to know what you're doing with their money, right?
Hundred percent. And, and the thing is, we can't have Ben and Bob and those type of guys sitting around doing grants because then they're not out doing our quality control on our infrastructure. That's where we need them. So a hundred percent, it's there. People don't realize with the federal highway, that whenever you get them involved, you have to follow their rules, and just the amount of paperwork and quality control and different things you have to do is, is crazy. Yeah.
And federal grants especially.
Hundred percent.
And, and different pricing structures on what people pay in insurances and all that kind of stuff that has to be checked off, so.
I won't see you at the first budget meeting, so good luck, and I hope this helps a little bit.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions on this presentation? Please come down and state your name for the record.
Connie Weisenhut. Todd, can you talk a little bit to us about, it sounds like we got it under control, and I appreciate the grant part and educating on that part. So if we're getting ready to pass a vote for the PPRTA, what's the timeline between, I don't even know how to ask the question. Like, so we have this, and it's going to be like next year, in the next couple of years? And then how long before we're a member of the PPRTA after it passes the vote?
So the, in summary, and this was asked at one of our town hall meetings that we had, and Rick Sonnenberg, who runs PPRTA, made sure, I let him answer it so it was correct. But PPRTA, our maintenance piece of PPRTA. So they've estimated that'd be two point three, two point four million that we'd be, we would start receiving that next year.
Okay.
The capital piece of that, which we would have to submit our projects, and we would put together, along with the council's help and the, and the residents' help, we would put together a capital list of projects, so it'd be very similar to this, right? It wouldn't be these projects, but it would be other ones. So we would have neighborhoods that we could go in and fix. We would have areas that we haven't been able to get grants for. So the Crest area, the Southmore area a lot more, Little Ranches, Cross Creek, Heritage, all those areas that need to be rebuilt, they would be on our capital list. And then that would have to be voted upon and approved. Then that would have to go into effect, I believe, the soonest we could start that is 2025, if I remember correctly.
And that, the capital projects piece goes to the entire membership of the RTA, not just the city?
Everybody's capital projects go in there. They've never had any turned down, but they go into, into that entire system. So, so in other words, what that means, Connie, is we can't take that money and spend. we can't take that money and spend it anywhere else. Once those projects are approved, they have to go to what those approved projects are. And that's been a question. Everybody said, can you use it over here? No, we cannot.
Okay. And that goes the same with the match, so the match is for that specific thing, like Ventana's making that big match, so it only goes to that, and it doesn't go to more affordable housing or anything like that?
It's restricted. You've already seen Ventana's money go to work. We did the reconstruction of Old Pueblo Road and the improvements with that funding.
Okay. And my last question is to Deetra's comment in regards to citizens who were riding with Todd to see some of those things. So, I know that Fran, for example, went on a ride. So, did she see this stuff?
Fran's went on a couple of rides.
Oh, yeah? Have she seen this stuff, or she saw other things?
Whatever Fran wanted to see, we saw. Yeah, yeah. When, what Deetra was talking about, when we go out on a ride, we basically, we will show them kind of the big projects we have, and then we'll say, is there anything that interests you in your neighborhood or what you'd like to see going on around your neighborhood, and we go take a look at it.
Okay. Thank you.
Please come down and state your name for the record.
Fran Carrick. Oh, we've talked for years, we've talked for years about hiring a grant writer. Have we done it? Have we advertised for one? What's the plan for that? Because that is a specific position, qualifications, and criteria.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Fran, great question. So, I just had a discussion with one of the companies we work with today. They have a grant writing division. So, they've sent us a proposal to see if that would be more fiscally responsible than hiring a full-time employee. So, we're going to take a look at that, and then Scott is also going to talk about that with the council during the budget process.
Good. Great.
You bet.
And I think one of the concerns has always been, the grant writer pretty much needs to pay their own way.
That's correct.
And there are some grants that you can put some of that money into, and there are some grants you can't.
That's correct.
So, that's, and that's just always been something that we've looked at, and are we at the tilting point where
That's correct.
Where they can pay their own way or not. So, that's always been some of the concern there. So, okay. I thought you didn't have a question. You do have one now. Okay.
For those that are interested in a tour with Todd, if you want, you can request your city council member to come along on the ride. I've gone on several.
So's Deetra.
Deetra has gone on several. So, if you want a council member to go with you, we can work that in the schedule.
Todd, you're going to be off for a few weeks, so
I will.
The rides won't be happening for a few weeks with you, but maybe we can get somebody else to
You bet.
Help with that while you're off. So, okay. All right. So, the email again is tms@ All right. Thank you very much. It's a great overview of everything that's going on in the city tonight, this right now. Okay, that takes us on to item 10, City Council Agenda Request. I'm going to start on my left here tonight. Anybody on my left have a City Council Agenda Request?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would like to make an agenda request. I have received feedback from both the public and from the city staff that we increase the amount of time people have to discuss items only for agenda items, from three minutes to five minutes. I've got this from staff, I've got this from the public. I would ask that we discuss it and get some feedback from the public. That's all I have.
Just to clarify, you're talking about agenda items, not public to be heard?
Right. Agenda items only, not public to be heard. Public to be heard would still stay at three minutes.
Okay. I just want to clarify.
And I'll give everybody an example, and I talked to Todd about this. If you remember here several months ago, Daryl Couch was in here talking about the licensing, and it took him a while, but he got to the point to where he said, oh, by the way, this thing says you can come in my house without a search warrant. And it took him a while to get to it, but it was a very important point, and it was something that needed to be discussed. And I want to make sure we're giving people that opportunity to get it out.
Okay. So, we have a suggestion for our council member to add an agenda request item to discuss that. Is anybody else, what does council want to do with that? Okay. All right. Todd, you got that? All right. Okay. All righty. Anybody else on my left have any agenda items? Okay. Anybody on the right have any agenda items? Okay. I have one. I'm going to request, see if you'd like to discuss the possibility of the council considering a resolution at our next council meeting in opposition of HH that's placed on the ballot this November by the state legislature. And while this bill appears to reduce property taxes, it really doesn't, and it's a shell game of your money. While it looks good for the first few years, I'm going to quote, read a quote from the Gazette written by Linda Gorman, an economist with the Independence Institute. Like the Gallagher campaign, the HH campaign is riddled with half. HH proponents say that taxpayers are only giving up their Tabor refunds for 10 years, and while that's technically true, the problem is that HH language gives the legislature the sole power to determine whether taxpayers lose their Tabor refunds permanently after the 10 years is up. When has Colorado Legislature voluntarily opted out to reduce its spending, and if HH passes, voters will say no, voters will have no say, and Tabor refunds could possibly be gone forever. End of quote. HH also talks about expanding the Senior Homestead Exemption Act, something that PPACG and the Fountain Legislative Committee has been pushing for for over three years. Yes, the Senior Homestead Exemption Act needs to be improved, raising the amount of the value of the home and making it portable to a different home, but the state legislature has fought this for years, killing it in committee, and this needs to be passed as a standalone bill and not added to HH just so people will vote for it. Please also remember, the state can lower their portion of your tax bill at any time without having to go to the voters. If they're coming to the voters to supposedly lower your tax, doesn't that make you wonder why? The state can already send money to schools, special districts, and rental assistance without HH and without possibly keeping your Tabor refunds for at least 10 years or probably even more. So, would council be interested in putting that on as an agenda item, as a possible resolution in opposition to HH? Got three yeses down here. Yes, yes, yes. Okay. And that's something that's kind of timely, so we will need to have that on the next council agenda. So, and I do have some samples that I have received that we can use to look at that. So, all righty, unless anybody has anything else, I am adjourning the council meeting for tonight.